Since it is four o'clock, we call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Let's say the pledge first, please.
.....................................................................
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to read the ground rules. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There are a few ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence the ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. Mr. Taylor, can we get rid of the echo? If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give to planning staff before the start of the meeting. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name. Thank you. Your name, your address, and agenda item number that you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Your microphone will otherwise remain muted. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair. Use the microphone, it's there in the center, to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities, at least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. For special use docket decisions. Special use dockets are approved by this commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact the case planner. Other docket decisions. Dockets other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by this commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for applicant statement, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. Thank you. That sounds much better. Roll call. Will... Mr. Montgomery?
I'm present.
Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mr. Martzki?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
And Ms. Fickett?
Present.
Chair Dupew is present. Do we have any comments or corrections on last month's minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? Second? Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Now for another roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery, do you approve the minutes?
I will abstain, having been absent.
Thank you. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Chair approves. Mr. Watkins? Mr. Young? I think you were absent, sir. Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
And Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this time pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H is the opportunity for public comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on this agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration. I have one request form. Mr. Baker, would you like to come forward? Are you on team, sir? Mr. Baker?
Yes, I am. Hello?
Thank you. Thank you. Please state your name and address. You have five minutes to address this commission.
Yes, Dan Baker, ETUSA.org. I'm going over and just, I had submitted the moratorium, just trying to get it on the comprehensive. Basically, it's, I really feel, and that's just my feeling, you know, the community's health and our well-being should come first before, you know, outsiders come in and even dictate. But on reference to a letter I had received, and they had noted of Mr. Anthony F. Newton, he had left a Megan Wright. I had called Megan Wright, and just to let everyone know, Megan, and he does not have a lease there. It's not a, he rented a conference room. I've played at the Bellagio, played at the MGM, but for me to claim that the MGM or Bellagio is, my address is kind of off the wall. But that's, that is, if we have that in the office, somebody who actually checks any applications would probably be good for the community. It's what I'm bringing up. And also the moratorium, I mean, you know, there's benefits, but there's also, you know, the negative side. And just wanted to reach out that we're still here. I would love to get any data points of any soil testing of the facilities that are in now or even prior. Last time I spoke, I know there was none. That would be good to show the community that, you know, here, they're on the up and up, you know? Other than that, I appreciate everybody have a blessed day. I will be hopefully coming in and getting to the next step of that moratorium that's really, I think, really important, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, either in the audience or online, that would like to speak at call to public? Hearing none. We'll now move to item one. This is docket RZ 23-24, Sunsites Unit 2. Applicant requests rezoning of NB and SR 43 parcels to RU 4. Applicant is Jeff Thede. Thede, are you present, sir?
Yes, I am. We say Thede.
Could you pronounce it for me, please?
Yes, ma'am. We say Thede.
Thank you very much. We'll be calling on you in a moment. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ 23-24. The applicant again is Jeff Thede. The property is located in Sunsites Unit 2 of Palm Road and Towner Street. Two parcels, 117-05054A and 117-05042. Current zoning of the property is neighborhood business and single residence. Proposed zoning is RU 4. It's located within growth area D. It's designated by the Mid Valley Sulphur Springs Plan as medium-density residential. The property is currently undeveloped and the proposed use is a single-family residence. Again, the property is about five acres and it's located in Sunsites Unit 2 about five miles west of Highway 191. And the property, again, the zoning map demonstrates the property is split-zone business and residential. The property owner seeks to downzone the property to RU 4 and combine the parcels to participate in the county's owner-builder program. Some, an image of the posted sign on the property, as well as that would be Towner. Some images, this is viewing south, showing the property and foreground highlighted in yellow. And in another image, viewing approximately southeast. The applicant's site plan demonstrates the intent to develop the property for a single-family residential use. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identify 15 factors used to evaluate rezoning requests. In this particular case, nine factors are applicable. Factors in favor of approval include complies with all applicable factors, compatible with the existing residential growth pattern. The proposed downzone reduces the number of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. And staff has not identified any factors not in favor of the application. Public notification occurred between 18 and 23 September wherein staff published legal ad posted the property and mailed notices to property owners within 300 feet. To date, the only property owner that responded was the applicant who owns multiple parcels in the immediate area. And that concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 23-24. We are available for the commission's questions, and the applicant is present online.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Mr. Thede, you have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address before speaking.
My name is Jeff, and my last name is Thede. My address is 250 South Ocatillo Avenue in Benson, Arizona 85602. And I have no comment at this point. I believe that Matthew summarized just about everything we're going to do, and I concur with that. And since there were no opposition, I think I'm good to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is the time for public hearing. I call for comments from other persons, either online or in the audience. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Hearing none. Mr. Thede, do you waive your right to rebuttal, or did you think of something you should have said?
I think I can waive that right to rebuttal.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Does the commission have any questions for applicant or staff? Again, hearing none. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 23-24 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could I have the motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ 23-24 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions. Rezoning tax parcel 117-05054A and 117-05042 from Neighborhood Business District and SR 43, Sycamore household residential. To RU 4, rural district, one house per paper, finding the factor of the downstooty approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Gonzalez? Is there any further discussion of this motion? Hearing none. Ms. Fickett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Item two is docket RZ 24-15, Moonbeam Drive. Applicant requests rezoning of RU 2 to RU 4. Are the applicants Dan and Rose Weber present? Thank you very much. We'll call on you in a moment. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ 24-15. The applicant is our Dan and Rose Weber. The property is located at Moonbeam Drive and Night Sky Road in Desert Sky subdivision near McNeil. APN 40402432. The request is to downzone the property from RU 2 to RU 4. The growth area designation is D. Plan designation is also D. Existing use there are accessory structures on the property, proposed use as a single-family residence. Property totals about five acres, again, located within Desert Sky subdivision about three miles east of Highway 191. The property is zoned rural as are surrounding lands. The parcel immediately to the west was downzoned from RU 2 to RU 4 in 2021. Some images of the property showing the posting sign as well as Moonbeam Drive. The applicant's site plan demonstrating the proposed improvements and the intent to develop the parcel for residential use. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identify factors to evaluate rezoning applications. In this case, nine factors do apply. The minimum requirement to participate in the county's owner-builder program is to have a zoning district with a minimum site area of four acres as well as a minimum parcel size of four acres. Factors in favor of approval of this application: complies with all applicable factors. Proposed use is compatible with the existing residential growth pattern, which is very low density. The downzone would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners, and staff has also not identified any factors not in favor. Staff engaged in public notification between 18 and 23 September, mailing notices, posting the property, and publishing a legal ad. And those notices included six notices to property owners within 300 feet. Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 24-15. We are available for the commissioners' questions.
Thank you. Mr. and Ms. Weber, this is your time to address the commission. Would you like to come forward? Applicant supports Mr. Taylor's report and has no further comments to add. This is time for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online that wishes to address this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Are there any questions for staff or applicant? Again, hearing none. Mr. Taylor, it's time for your summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 24-15 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to have someone please read the motion now.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Watkins?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ 24-15 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions. Rezoning tax parcel 404 to 422 from RU 2 to RU 4. The factors of approval constituting the fact.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Martzki. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Call for the question. Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Again, it is unanimous. Congratulations. This commission is clearly in favor of rural living. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you. Move on to item three, RZ 24-16, Desert Road. Applicants are requesting rezoning of SR 43 to RU 4. Jonathan and Ashley Longnecker, are you present or online? Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ 24-16. The applicants are Jonathan and Ashley Longnecker. The property is located at Pearson Desert Roads in Sunsites Unit 2. Includes six parcels, 117-06217, 218, 219, 228, 235, and 238. Current zoning of the parcels is SR 43. The proposed zoning is RU 4. Property is located within comprehensive plan designation rural area designated by the Sulphur Springs Valley area plan as medium-density residential. Existing use of these parcels is undeveloped. The proposed use is to include with an existing residential use on adjacent parcels also owned by the applicant. Again, the parcel is located within Sunsites Unit 2 about five miles west of Highway 191. And the properties that are hatched are SR 43. The applicant owns adjacent parcels, currently zoned RU 4, having rezoned those parcels in Some images of the parcel with the posting sign as well as Pierce Road. The applicant's site plan demonstrates the intent to incorporate these parcels into existing homestead of the two RU 4 parcels. The adjacent parcels total about 11 acres that are already zoned RU 4. The proposed rezoning of the parcels encompasses six parcels and nine additional acres. Some imagery, this would be viewing to the northwest, showing the parcels in question. Two parcels at the bottom along Pierce Road and additional three parcels to the north of those. And an additional view east showing the property owner's residence in the foreground at the corner of Desert and Pierce Roads. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning applications. Nine factors apply to this request. Factors in favor of the application include it complies with all applicable factors. The proposed use is compatible with the residential growth pattern of the area. The downzone would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners, and staff has not identified any factors not in favor of the application. Staff executed public notification between 18 and 23 September, mailing notices, posting the property, and publishing a legal advertisement. Staff mailed notices to 36 property owners within 300 feet, receiving responses from two property owners, one of whom owns multiple properties within the notification area. And Madam Chair, that completes staff's presentation of docket RZ 24-16. We are available for your questions. Thank you.
This is the time for the applicant's statement. Would you like to come forward and speak? Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes if so desired.
Thank you. Jonathan Longnecker, 863 South Desert Road. I do agree with everything Mr. Taylor said, but I wrote some stuff, so I'm going to talk to you. We bought and rezoned the 11 acres back in 2020. We rezoned them, and we've been developing on that property ever since in an effort to give us some more breathing room and space and reduce the opportunity for neighbors. We purchased these additional six acres. They're all contiguous to the two existing parcels. And so we want to combine these so that we can simplify our taxes, so we can remove property lines and setbacks that are sort of artificial at this point because we own out everything. But as we get permits for accessory buildings and stuff like that, we just want to simplify that process. Since we rezoned the original 11 acres, we couldn't combine these new parcels because they weren't zoned the same, so we kind of got stuck in a circular loop. And so that's why we're rezoning. But we have already submitted the request to combine because Mr. Taylor mentioned that technically these wouldn't be conforming parcels because they're all one-acre pieces. So these will eventually be all combined into these larger four-acre-plus parcels when it's all said and done. That's the plan. It's our hope that by combining these parcels will just help keep this area the way that it is and the reason that we moved there, quiet and beautiful and sparsely populated. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on this matter is now open. Are there any comments from other persons, either in the room or on teams? Hearing none. The applicant is allowed a rebuttal, or can we waive that, Mr. Longnecker? Thank you very much. Public hearing is their call. I'm sorry, is closed. And it's time for commission discussion. Is there anything for the applicant or staff regarding this matter? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, may we have your summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 24-16 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you.
Call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ 24-16 to the Board of Supervisors without special restrictions. Rezoning from SR 43, single-family household, one dwelling for 43 square feet, 40,000 square feet, RU 4, rural one dwelling falling for four acres. Factors in favor of approval constitute combined.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. Any further discussion? Call for the question then. Ms. Fickett, how do you vote?
Aye for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Again, it is unanimous. Congratulations. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with the docket. We have another rezoning item, 24-17, and Comp Plan 24-05 amendment, I'm sorry, on Border Road. Applicant requests rezoning of R 36 to RU 18. The applicant is Vicki Seaver. Are you with us, Ms. Seaver?
Madam Chair, the applicant is online.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you very much. We'll be calling on you in a moment. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for dockets RZ 24-17 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment The applicant is Vicki Seaver. The properties are located at 856 and 882 East Border Road. Two parcels, 1013900K, 8K, and 10148001M. Plan amendment requests are from Neighborhood Conservation to Rural and Growth Area C to Growth Area D. The zoning amendment request is from R 36 and RU 4 to RU 18. Existing use of the property is for single-family residential, and that is also the proposed use to retain its residential land use. Properties located about a half a mile east of Bisbee Junction Road, approximately one mile north of the international border. This map shows the comprehensive land designation and that it is adjacent to rural designated parcels to the north and to the east. The growth area map shows the same scenario, adjacent to growth area D parcels to the north and east. The property is split-zoned, R 36 and RU 4. The applicant wishes to rezon the parcels. The total parcel size would be, upon combination, would be 34 acres. And rezon the property to RU 18 to retain that large lot character as well as natural features on the property. Some images of the signs posted by staff along Border Road. This is an image that would be roughly viewing north, showing the parcels. It's important to note that there is a one-acre parcel in between the applicant's parcels. The applicant can explain the scenario and how unusual it is. There is not a residence on that site, and it's used for a well site. And the applicant and owner of that site have discussed, or the applicant had hoped to acquire that property at some point. Otherwise, the property, the downzoning from R 36 to RU 18 would be an appropriate downzone. This is the northern half of the parcel, showing some of the residents and some existing accessory structures, as well as a water feature at the north edge of the property. We won't go through this too quickly. Neighborhood conservation is the designation for most of the parcels, with the exception of about six acres in the corner and the northeast corner. Typically, we would expect to see this for lot sizes of one acre or less and existing platted subdivisions that warrant protection from non-residential uses. The land use designation of rural would be appropriate. The land use designation of rural would be appropriate given the property's large lot sizes, large expanse of land and natural features. The same with the growth areas. A rural area designation demonstrating a low growth rate and low densities on large lots would be an appropriate change for these parcels. As far as the plan amendment criteria go, there are six amendments, six criteria identified in the comprehensive plan. The applicant's presentation, the applicant's application, three of the criteria do not apply, two comply and one does not comply. Terms of the factors in favor, the pattern of the growth no longer reflects type of growth expected in the current designation. The comprehensive plan designation is generally based on the existing lot configurations that existed at the time these designations were assigned. There's not been substantial growth. The new designation is harmonious with existing designations as it affords rural designations now. Three of the factors do not apply and staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Again, based on the number of notices, staff mailed twenty-eight notices and only received one response and that was in favor. But that wouldn't necessarily fall into the category of receiving substantial support from nearby property owners. So of these, one does not comply and six factors do not comply. These are the resulting factors identified in section two point six three in the zoning regulations. Factors in favor, it complies with eight of nine applicable factors. Again, this would be compatible with the residential growth pattern, which is largely low density residential. Would substantially reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings rezoning the properties to RU eighteen. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners and has not identified any factors not in favor of the application. Public notice was executed between eighteen and twenty-three September where staff published legal ad, mailed notices and posted the property. Again, staff mailed twenty-eight notices to property owners within a thousand feet as required by the comprehensive plan, receiving one response in favor. I would like to note that the respondent in favor appeared before the commission or his application appeared before the commission last month. And it was also a comprehensive plan and a downzone to rural. That was approved by the Board of Supervisors on the twenty-fourth of September. Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation of dockets RZ twenty-four seventeen and CPA twenty-four zero four. We are available for your questions.
Thank you. This is time for the applicant's statement. Ms. Seaver?
I think I'm supposed to address the one acre in the middle and that is my neighbor's well. This property originally was one big piece of property and then it was divided up. When that happened, the well was kept with my neighbor's house because that's their water source. At one time I asked about buying it and they have since sold that property to someone else and they're using that for their water source. So unless they want to sell it to me, I guess they'll just keep it as their one acre well. And I'm pretty sure they don't ever plan on building on it. Wouldn't make really much sense. The rest of the property, we divided it out one of the times when we refinanced. So now I'm just hoping to put it all back together as one big piece and keep that all as it is. Just keep it protected and especially because there's an infernal pond on the back. I don't know if you saw pictures of it because I can't see them, but I want to keep that as natural as possible. There's a lot of wildlife back there. And I think that's about it.
Thank you very much. It's time for the public hearing portion. Is there any comments from other persons either in the room or online? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. This is time for commission discussion. Is there any questions for the applicant or staff from the commissioners? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, could we have your summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding dockets RZ twenty-four seventeen and CPA twenty-four zero five to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you.
Have the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbok?
I move to recommend approval of dockets RZ twenty-four dash seventeen and CPA twenty-four dash zero five to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions. Amending comprehensive plan designations and zoning district classification of tax parcels, one zero one dash thirty-nine dash zero zero eight K and one zero one dash forty-eight dash zero zero one M. From Neighborhood Conservation to Rural, Growth Area C to Growth Area D. And rezoning from R thirty-six and RU four to RU eighteen. The factors in favor of approval constituting findings affect.
Thank you, Mr. Martzki. Is there any further discussion of this motion before we vote? Hearing none. Ms. Fickett?
I vote aye for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins? Mr. Limbok?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Again, it is unanimous. Congratulations. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you. Moving on to our final item, it is docket SU twenty-four dash eighteen, Ringtail Road Fabrication. The applicant is Kirk Sterns. Are you present? Thank you very much. Could we have the planning director's report, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU twenty-four eighteen, a special use authorization request for a fabrication business. The applicant is Kirk Stern. The property is located at twenty-five eighty-two West Ringtail Road. APN one two four twenty-one zero zero one A. The property totals approximately twenty acres. Current zoning is RU four. The plan designation is developing and it's within the community growth area designation of the comprehensive plan. Current use is residential with a home-based business. Proposed use is residential with a fabrication business with outside storage. The property is located approximately one half mile south of the Benson Municipal Boundary, about eight hundred and fifty feet west of Highway eighty. The property is zoned RU four, as are all surrounding parcels, all of which exceed four acres, meter exceed four acres. The applicant's site plan, it's important to note that the applicant does reside on the property and received a home occupation permit in twenty twenty-four. The permit authorized off-site mechanical repair, business office to employees, equipment and fleet maintenance and repair in an existing garage. The home occupation provisions do limit those activities to twenty-five percent of the floor area of the principal residence. The special use, if approved, would authorize an additional outdoor storage. Business activities exceeding twenty-five percent of the floor area, which is a restriction of the home occupation permit and three employees. Any modification to that would be subject to administrative review or would come back to the commission for a modification. This is a blow up of the site plan showing the property's location. The improvements on the property are located very close to the west property line, roughly the southwest corner of the property. Some images, the image at the top shows the gate along Ringtail Road. And the second image shows Ringtail Road viewing east. This would be the access gate along Manzanita Road, which would be to the east also. Some drone imagery of the property, again, showing the majority of the development on the site, the twenty acre parcel. The residence and all the accessory structures in place are very close to the west property line. Another image showing the property to the right and some of the nearest residences. And one last graphic. The purpose of this graphic is to demonstrate that the applicant does not utilize Ringtail Road for their business traffic. To be clear, there's no onsite customer traffic, but their work vehicles do not utilize Ringtail Road. They utilize an existing path through adjacent properties that the applicant also owns, which has access to Manzanita Road, which is the previous gate shown. Section two forty, two point four eight of the zoning regulations identifies ten factors that staff uses as well as the commission uses to evaluate special use requests. This application, eight factors apply. Factors in favor that the application does comply with eight of eight applicable factors. The sole factor not in favor would be that business activities which expanded beyond the approved home occupation permit resulted in a neighbor complaint and a subsequent code compliance action, which in turn resulted in the special use application. The applicant mailed letters to property owners within five hundred feet on six August, receiving a number of responses, concerns from neighboring property owners. Sent out a second letter on the twentieth of August to in an attempt to address some of those concerns. Staff followed up, executing public notification requirements of the zoning regulations between twenty-one and twenty-three August. Mailing notices to property owners within five hundred feet, posting the property and publishing a legal ad. Staff mailed eleven notices to property owners within five hundred feet. Receiving responses from nine property owners. It's important to note that four of the nine property owners own more than one parcel, including the applicant. The responses from within the notification area, seven property owners identify that they were opposed to the application. Two property owners are in support. That would be the applicant who owns three parcels as well as the property owner to the west. Staff also received a petition from folks within the neighborhood. That petition did include four owners within the notification area, three of whom had already provided their feedback individually. And there were an additional four outside the notification area, which in this case is demonstrated by the red dots. And Madam Chair, that concludes staff's presentation of docket SU twenty-four eighteen, a special use request for a fabrication business. We are available for your questions.
Thank you. The applicant like to make a statement? Please come forward. You have ten minutes. State your name and address first, please.
Good evening. My name's Kirk Sterns. This is my wife Natasha. Zired at two five eight two Ringtail, St. David, the subject property. First, I'd like to thank the commission for everything you're doing and thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your presentation.
We wanted to start off by telling you a little bit about us. I moved to Cochise County in two thousand twelve after I met my husband, who has deep roots here. He's a longtime Cochise County resident and grew up in Tombstone. For the first decade of our life together, he traveled extensively, working in the industry while I pursued my master's degree to become a certified school counselor. In two thousand fourteen, we bought our home. And soon after, our family grew with addition of two wonderful, rambunctious little boys, now nine and six years old. Three years ago, I took on the role as a full-time school counselor, which gave us the opportunity to launch our own business centered around our family values. In August two thousand twenty-one, we opened Integrity. And then by March two thousand twenty-two, we hired our first employee. We welcomed our first employee. We prioritized, oh, I'm sorry. But we prioritized slow, sustainable growth to ensure we stay true to our commitments and value. We're fortunate to have a team of incredible employees who feel like family to us. And we've built a loyal customer base that keeps us thriving. This success has opened up new opportunities for us, allowing us to homeschool our boys this year and give back to our community through volunteer work and donations. Our core values are the foundation for business.
I'm going to paraphrase for the sake of time. We provide high-quality work and services with small-town values. We strive to deliver innovative solutions while giving back and supporting the local economy and community. Business overview is our primary focus, is millwright work, where we perform installation, maintenance and repair of machinery at our customers' location. We offer custom metal fabrication services where our skilled team produces high-quality products. Most of our work is performed onsite at our customers' locations with our highly equipped service trucks. This allows us to respond to emergency calls with rapid response times. We maintain a top-notch quality control program and actively participate in local events and initiatives and love giving back to the community. Our support for local projects helps strengthen relationships and contributes to the well-being of the areas we serve.
These operations reflect our dedication to excellence, integrity and strong community values.
Well, about us, we've been serving the agricultural, commercial and industrial sectors for three years now. We have high hourly pay rates. All of our employees have graduated from Cochise College and are local to the area. We've made generous donations to the local schools, youth programs throughout the county. The, our location is critical to serve our local agricultural and commercial customers while also boosting the local economy by serving customers in Pima, Graham, Greenlee and Maricopa Counties. It's the overhead view of our location with our three parcels and the yellows, the road that we cut in. Along with some photos of the area, it's showing the dense vegetation throughout. Excellent.
The shop serves as our base for operations, including our fleet maintenance, our office, small inventory and then small repair, fabrication and maintenance services. Our shop is sixteen hundred square feet. It's right next to our house. It's got newly insulated bay doors and is not open to the public at all. And we have no business signs or outside lighting.
More images of the area there. Head in each direction. There's some of the new trees that we've planted and the break that we had in our existing evergreen trees that we had mature trees and some light junk vehicles, sorry about that. Our storage area out behind our shop views there. The view.
North view.
North view and south view. The south view is blocked by the evergreen trees and our shop and home. So to ensure a quiet and peaceful neighborhood and after receiving feedback from the neighbors, which we, you know, hadn't been aware of some of the issues before, we've gone ahead and installed new insulated bay doors in the last couple of weeks to really cut down on noise. Soon as we received the feedback, the first feedback, we began shutting our bay doors to cut noise down immediately. The property is gated with the driveway on Ringtail Road is permanently locked and we don't use that for personal use and all the business use and our personal use is now coming up the new road on Manzanita. Ninety percent of our work is offsite and that's the way we plan to keep it. We strategically planted twenty-three fast-growing evergreen trees as a sound and visual barrier. We did that over the last couple of weeks with the work and some help from a certified arborist. Our operation is daylight hours only, Monday through Friday. And because of this, we don't require any outside lighting for the business. Here's the overhead view with some distances that were taken from Google Earth. As you can see, most of the houses are approximately a quarter mile away from our shop location. From point two on the map, that's the southwest corner of this parcel. With a certified meter we measured on a busy day at the shop, thirty-one point two decibels. About as loud as a whisper. This is recently after the insulation and all that to the shop. It was a fairly busy day and out there while we were measuring it, the birds on the trees were making more noise than the shop was.
We are committed to family and to community. So we operate as a family business based on that American dream. We emphasize family time for ourselves and our employees and in our client balance. We emphasize family time for ourselves and our employees, and it works like balance. Again, our operating hours are just daylight hours, Monday through Friday. We have a respect for our neighborhood, we have no plans for expansion or public storefront. This is our home, we don't want people coming here. And we have community support, I mean, we serve on the advisory of Cochise College. We donate PPE and material to the local high school CTE programs, and we are big contributors for our local youth sports and family assistance programs. Our home is above all a family home. We've spent years preparing for this opportunity to balance time with our children for running a successful business. We deeply value our home, neighborhood, and community, which is why we want to continue operating from our home during this stage of our business. The special use permit will allow us to serve our family, business, and the community. If you're forced to either close the business due to storage limitations, or relocate in desperation, it could have serious consequences for our family, our employees, and our community. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. It is the time we ask for comments from other persons. I do have some requests to speak. Each of you will have five minutes. First is Ted Haas. State your name and address, please.
My name is Ted Haas, I live at two eleven South Arizona Avenue in Wilcox, Arizona. I farm along with my brother and nephews north of Wilcox, and I also farm south of Wilcox, work with Riverview. At both of my jobs, I am very involved in grain storage, in feed mill operations, and in farm equipment operations. Working with Kirk has been always very productive. Kirk and his crew are always timely. Agriculture, like most businesses, is very timely. If you've got cattle to feed, or grain to store, or farm equipment to run, and something breaks, we need help pretty quickly, or very quickly. A call to Kirk is almost guaranteed that he'll be there, or one of his guys will be there, and get us back operating. His close proximity, we've used mill rights in the past from as far away as Phoenix, but his close proximity is very helpful to us in the Sulphur Springs Valley. So not only is he timely and prompt, he does excellent work, his crew does excellent work. If he fixes it, it's done, and you go on, something else might break, but that'll be fine. And critical, and I think is a reflection on his operation, when he leaves a job site, it's clean, it's tidy, and it's orderly. And I've never been to his property, but you can see from his pictures, they're very tidy and orderly, and that's exactly how he leaves any of the jobs that he's been on with us. I also gotta say that I've only met his two sons once, and they are very well-behaved young men. And that's a reflection also of the family that is raising them. And then I gotta kinda tell you, this is the truth. So the first job that he helped us with, it was kind of a, we were in a pinch. Like most jobs, we were in a pinch to get it done, to get it done right. And after they did it, they got it done, and they got it done right, I told my wife, I said, if I wasn't married yet, and I was gonna get married, I'd have those guys be my groomsmen. And from then on, she said, are the groomsmen coming out today? So that's kind of our little nickname for them, they're really faithful, good, hard-working guys that we count a lot on. Thank you all for your service to our county.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Next is Jack. Gredo, thank, DeGredo, thank you very much, come forward, your name and address, please.
Jack DeGredo, twenty-five eighty-five West Ringtail Road, St. David, eight five six three zero. I'm here on docket number SU twenty-four eighteen. You know, I'm not here to dispute his quality of work, or he runs a great business. Many of those things that he's talking about here, I'm sure he does. But he does it at his place, which creates noise and confusion and mess around our neighborhood. Now, that thirty-one decibel thing that he said, is, is ten times out of my house sometimes, between the grinding and the banging. You know, he works on some big, heavy stuff, there's big trucks coming and going. You know, not all the time, it's not a constant traffic flow. But there's boom trucks I've seen coming up Ringtail Road. Delivery trucks, of course, I know he says he's changed that now, and maybe he has. But the point being is, is that the noise, and he has like seven people working. At least by the way I counted, seven different cars in that yard. And I know that's way too many for a residential designated business. And if he does ninety percent of his work off-site, then he must be one heck of a big business, because that place is constantly busy, again, the noise levels are just, they're, they're just, you know, uncomfortable. You go out in your yard in the morning, and you know, all you hear is grinding, banging, dust flying. So anyway, again, I'm not here to dispute that he runs a good business, it's just the way, where he runs it at. He needs to find a place in a commercial area to run his business. I can't imagine why he would want those employees, that many people running around his place with his children there. That's just my opinion on that focus, so anyway, that's all I really have to add, thank you.
Thank you. Todd Miller.
Hi, yes, I'm Todd Miller, twenty-four sixteen West Ringtail Road in St. David, eight five six three zero. I've got a statement also that I'd like to read from a resident that is on vacation, not coming back till tonight. I also have another one from the one family that was an approval, this is how our neighborhoods, we love each other, regardless if we disagree on something. So she asked if I would read something for her too, so if I run over to five minutes, I would hope that I could get a couple of minutes leniency since I'm gonna talk for two other people over there, is that okay?
We'd like to hold you to the five minutes, but.
Okay, I'm gonna get right to the point, the core, this is from Susan and Jason Rice, and they are twenty-seven, or yeah, twenty-seven fifty North Ringtail. The core idea of the American dream is to be able to make a living by doing hard, honest work to freedom and opportunity to succeed and attain a better life. I live next door to Kirk and Natasha, occasionally I hear the grinding and banging, it's not every day or all day. Honestly, I can hear their kids just as much as the grinder. She hopes, as neighbors, is there a way for us to come to a compromise on this issue, and support them in this transitionary phase for time and work? The next one is from Dan and Darla Bruner, and they're twenty-seven oh five North Ringtail. Having spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to purchase this property over three years ago as our retirement sanctuary, we thought we'd find the perfect quiet, peaceful rural home in a close-knit community. Unfortunately, we're now facing the possibility of a metal fabrication manufacturing business operating in the middle of our neighborhood. Our main concerns are noise from manufacturing travels, and more prominent in this rural setting, property values will suffer due to potential buyers not wanting to live near a manufacturing facility, employing customer traffic negatively impacting our dirt roads. If this is allowed to pass, it sets a precedent for future applicants. This negative impact has the potential to change our community, and it's something unrecognizable. Dan and Darla Bruner. I also had the petition and four members on Ringtail and Manzanita that are opposing this, and I'm gonna go over with my reasons. I love you guys, and will always love you, and love your boys. And I do respect your business, and I appreciate that he is working hard for a business and to better this community, one hundred percent. However, this place that we live in has about fifteen, twenty people that live there, everybody's got four to forty acres, or one road in and out. It's our retirement happy place, it's peaceful, it's tranquil, it's always quiet. For eight months, I've listened to grinding and banging, I'm right next door to him, and I see the cars coming from his employees coming in there. I'm grateful that his business is expanding, that's what I'm afraid of, that it expands more and he builds more in our community. There's a heavy equipment grinding, it's five days a week, the growth is natural, I appreciate that. We're worried about if this gets approved, someone else doing it in our little community, and this continues to take our rural community, that everybody outside of Kirk and Natasha and the Rice's, but to retire and to sit outside in peace and quiet. We wanna work together, is there some way that we can give a transitionary phase, just like Susan and Jason said, four months and say, okay, you've got four months, six months, and then you've gotta move to business. I will work with you proactively, I'll try and help them find property. Is there an ombudsman in the, in the county that will work with good business owners like this that want to lease property that's annexed by the county, and the county wins and they win? Now, I don't know what else we can do, however, can't, in good faith, even though I love them, allow this to start precedent in this really, really, really exclusive community that we live in, that is separated in the middle of St. David and Benson, away from everybody. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ben Thomas, please. Name and address first.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Thomas, and I live at St. David, one five nine West Ben Lane. I'm proud to call Cochise County my home, I grew up here, I attended college here, and fortunately enough, I was able to stay close to my family, especially to care for my grandmother as her health depends. As I completed my studies, I watched many of my classmates leave in search of high-paid jobs. If it weren't for Integrity Fab, I would have faced the same choice. Instead, I've been able to remain committed to our local economy and community. Today, I stand before you, not as an employee, but as a passionate advocate for Integrity Fab. We're the only local provider of high-paid jobs in our field, specializing in critical resources for our farms. That our presence these farms would be forced to seek services elsewhere, sending valuable dollars out of the county. This is not just a business matter, it is about the livelihoods of our employees and the financial health of our entire community. Our contributions go beyond creating jobs, we support local businesses, foster growth, and keep our community vibrant. The potential closure and forced relocation of Integrity Fab would force us to Tucson or Phoenix, sending shockwaves to our community, impacting families, local businesses, and essential services that rely on us. We must carefully consider the long-term consequences of our actions. Let us remember the values we hold dear, supporting one another, fostering growth, and maintaining a strong workforce. Together, we can ensure a brighter future for Cochise County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wishes to address this matter? I think that closes the public hearing portion, this is the time, I'm sorry, I spoke too early. This is the time for the applicant's rebuttal, if you'd like to come and comment on things that were said.
Excuse me, allergic to public speaking. Okay. Well, as, as I said, you know, according to the county website, approximately ninety percent of the unincorporated parts of the county are zoned rural. Are you for, for the most part. After spending hours studying the, the map, there's very few areas that aren't rural or residential. I'd say less than one percent are any type of industrial or commercial zoning. My type of use typically would go under exactly what we're doing now, a special use permit process. We didn't move into a residential area, it's rural, there's no HOAs, and it's not a planned retirement community. We purchased, like I know most of our neighbors did, for the freedom that the rural zoning allows. People in rural, excuse me, people in rural areas typically work in workshops, run tractors and equipment, and drive trucks. It's not expected to be whisper quiet.
Because of the concerns of our neighbors, we have taken so many proactive steps in order to make our business a better fit for the neighborhood. We planted eighteen evergreen trees along one border, just to make any sound barrier, visual barrier there. We put insulated doors in. We have a new road cut in, that we've had that road cut in since two thousand twenty-two, and it's our primary access. Actually, we cut it in first off because there was a big wash that we just didn't want to go here anymore.
Purchase made from, from Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Or the property.
And all of our storage, everything is, that is visual, you can't see from the road, you can't see from the properties. It is behind our house, behind our shop, our noise, immediately when we knew there was a concern of noise, we closed the bay doors and insulated them. We don't want for our neighborhood to feel like we're banging, and so we, and making ruckus, and.
Well, unfortunately, I think a lot of the noise comes from my kids too, they're, they're a little bit loud, but.
But, so.
Let's be expected.
Yeah. So, we have done a lot of steps along the way to be proactive. We don't wanna cause any discomfort in our neighborhood. We wanna validate how they're feeling and make sure we focus on what we can do to mediate that and find that compromise. We have been looking for properties for two years, but honestly, we're not even looking at growth right now. We are so content with where we're at in our business, that to go and buy something would be more hours, more employees. Where our focus right now is our family values, is our family time, and we get to do just that right now.
We're constantly looking at properties of a local real estate agent, constantly looking for, for other things, there's nothing out there. Without going off to Tucson or Phoenix, which I really don't want to do, I'll probably shut it down before I move. As far as some of the other concerns, delivery trucks, we don't get deliveries other than Amazon with the UPS guy and the local mail, which are gonna be coming either way to, to everybody, everybody buys everything online, or I guess. So the impact on the road, you know, for a road that's got quite a few residents going up the, a couple hundred feet of Manzanita, our impact is negligible. Most of that road goes on the easement of our property anyways, and we're happy to maintain it. And I tried to get out there with my farm tractor to grade the road when I can, but these, some of the neighbors beat me to it. But we're, we're happy to help and maintain the roads and gravel the roads to keep dust down, and everything we need to do to keep, keep on pushing forward. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, we may have further questions for you if you wanna stay in front. I mean, if you wanna.
Stay in the hot seat.
Well, go ahead and sit down. Yeah, let us talk a little bit, we may have questions for you. So now the public hearing portion is closed, it is time for commission discussion. Do you have any questions for applicant or staff?
I have a simple question, and regarding the fabrication, what precisely is it that's fabricating?
Well, so most of it is off-site, building things from grain elevators and installing structural stuff. For instance, one thing we're working on this last week is a customer in Phoenix with a steel mill melted a set of stairs that they had, so we're building an emergency steel set of stairs and some hand drill on it this week, things like that.
Okay, it's a basic concept, I wanted to.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, go first.
So based on the presentation, I wanna commend you Kirk, and your wife and your family. Based on what we've heard, I think that you folks are value-added to the community. I think that you provide economic benefits, and I think you're good stewards of your property. And living and working in an agricultural community where equipment is the key, either fail or succeed based on your equipment, it's nice to know that you provide that service in Cochise County.
Thank you.
Mr. Watkins?
The material, you, how do you bring in the material, like rebuilding steps and stuff for?
Just on a flatbed trailer pulled behind a pickup truck, most of it comes out of Tucson, out of the local, local yard up in Tucson. And we store leftovers and the basic inventory of angle. And we store leftovers and a basic inventory of angle irons and small channels and things like that, just so we can respond faster. So just on a flatbed, 24 foot flatbed trailer.
And just have a general comment from what I saw in pictures and everything. And I have three boys at home myself. Know how noisy things can be. And my shop is about the same size as yours. We're not insulating anything, but we don't have any real close neighbors. All the closest ones have filed. Never complained. But from what I saw, you have a clean operation going. And if you weren't doing a business, you could do it as just hobby, and nobody could say a word about it. And you'd probably make more noise or whatever, and not care about the neighbors. And what I'm seeing is you two care. And I'd like the neighbors to hear that. You could, they could sell out. You could get a worse family in there. You know, oh, a shop. Oh, let's have motorcycles. Let's have this and let's have that. So that's something to take into consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
I appreciate the comments here, because I've been taking notes in there, the same things. We're in agreement on this, and I think this has been a very excellent presentation. Thorough and clean, presented and answered my questions, really as you were talking. I believe that the applicants are very community oriented people, not wanting to step on anybody's toes, wanting to make a living and raise some kids. And I very much appreciate that. They have gone, in my view, when I'm seeing the extra mile or several, to accommodate the neighbors regarding noise and visuals with the trees you planted, upkeeping of the road as you've described with the others. And the offsite work primarily is most of your business. The sound insulation, and you have actually gone to measure the decibels after insulating your doors and shutting them. And I'll take your word for the measurements that you got, but if there is any opposition, there was none of that to offer. I have to appreciate that. And this commission often addresses noise levels, okay? Almost every month, there's something going on where we have to consider noise on behalf of the community. And it seems to me that you've taken care of that, and I appreciate it. And you're employing Cochise College students, are you also? That's as community as you can get around here, and I very much appreciate it. So, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Mr. Martzky.
Five different ones, in fact. Have you seen those recommendations?
I believe, I believe we've seen all of them, unless there's anything I hadn't seen.
One of them is a business operation, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. How much of your, I know if people have sent, you have talked about in emergencies, how much is after 5:00 in the evening?
So anything with an emergency, we're onsite. So the worst thing is if I'm coming home from Phoenix, my truck might come up the road, and the trucks might come up and they'll drive through. There's no work taking place at the shop that late in the evening. It's just, just driving to and from the shop. Any emergencies and anything else is all 100% offsite.
I guess I have a comment.
Ms. Vickett?
Being an Eric, a Cochise County lady, my husband and I operated a similar business to what you do. We've been married for 57 years, and for most of that, we did a very similar situation. And we worked with our neighbors as we got new neighbors in that were not raised in the rural agricultural environment. We found that they tended to be not as educated as some of the rest of us. And I, for one, am very appreciative of someone who has their children in the schools. I still sub at our school, and are interested in keeping a young family in our community, the communities. I appreciate that. And when we get the retirees in, sometimes they need to consider the community and the environment they're moving into. Maybe, I don't know. It's just, this is, it's a rural way of life, an agriculture life, and it's what a lot of us grew up in.
No, sir, I'm sorry, the public portion, no, sir, the public portion is closed. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I have a question, Mr. Sterns. Have you sought any feedback on your noise reduction efforts, closing your doors?
It's pretty, pretty new, and that's when we took the readings here. We started closing the doors whenever we sent out the first letters and got the responses back, because we weren't even aware that the noise had carried that far. Excuse me. And then we went on above to insulate, and that's when we took the readings with the meter, and I hadn't heard anything back from anybody, and I hadn't reached out.
Okay, thank you. And what, I keep hearing transitionary, this stage of our business. What does that mean?
Ideally, if we end up growing or anything, we'd love to move to an actual shop and have it out of the house, but nearby, I, you know, I don't want to commute to Tucson or Sierra Vista. There's really nothing currently available in the Benson-St. David area. And we've been, I promise you, I've been looking like no other, and in an attempt to get out of the neighborhood and keep the neighborhood happy, and that would be the transition, would be finding something else. But in the meantime, this is where we're at.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Mr. Watkins?
You say you insulate the doors. Is the building insulated too?
Not yet. That's the next step, but the doors, where the metal and the sound reverberates through them like crazy. The rest of it is the fiber board that seems to do a pretty good job of cutting sound.
Mr. Limbach, anything?
When do you plan on completing the insulation of the entire building?
I don't have any dates yet or anything. We're working on trying to make sure we get the funds, figure out how much that's going to go for, and all that. It's, they're out of the pocket doing all this.
It's your intent to do so.
Absolutely.
All right, if there are no further questions?
I'm good.
I would like to read something from our code, just to remind us how difficult this decision is. Rural districts allow non-residential activities that provide services, provided they are compatible with rural living. That's a mouthful. Rural living means one thing to one family and another thing to another family, so. Let's move on. Mr. Taylor, your summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2418 to allow a fabrication business with the following conditions. Business hours are limited to Monday through Friday between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Outdoor storage areas shall be screened using a wall or fence, vegetation and/or natural features. Fabrication and maintenance activity shall occur within a building to limit noise and offensive owners. Business vehicles shall use the secondary entrance on Manzanita Road to access the property. The applicant shall apply two inch gravel to driveway, storage, and parking areas where needed to reduce dust. Standard conditions relative to permitting and modifications of the special use would apply to this request if it's approved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd like to call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Martzky.
I'm hoping for a doc. I can't do 24-18, so I'll, the fabrication business with the position recommended by staff. Factors in favor of people who can't do it, by fact.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion? I do have one question for staff. Could you remind us, please, about the duration of the special use? Will it expire if they sell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The special use authorization is an entitlement that runs with the land.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I would now like to call for the question. Ms. Vickett?
Aye, in approval.
Mr. Martzky?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Thank you. Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday 8 to 5, or online at cochise.ez.gov, and I thank you all for your patience. Mr. Coxworth, do we have a report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, next month, we have three dockets, two downzonings and one upzoning. There was an appeal to the Board of Supervisors for the Dahlia solar project that you unanimously denied. I have spoken with them. I think they're just kind of going through the process. There isn't a high expectation on their part, but they will try, and as.
That's their right.
That's right. So three of you are up at the end of this year. Kim, are you, do you desire to continue with the?
Desire is a strong word. I'm willing to serve. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
A man.
And Mr. Saunders, but he's not here, so I will follow up with him. Up next year is Mr. Watkins, Mr. Montgomery, and Mr. Martzky. So you have one more year. And thank you for your service and continuing to serve. I will forward your names to the Board of Supervisors when have you reappointed, if they agree, before the end of the year.
Yep. All right.
All I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Have we gotten much feedback on the website about the comprehensive plan?
We are promoting it. I haven't looked at, this week I have not looked at the traffic on the site. I don't have any updates on how many surveys we received. We were trying to encourage people at the Cochise County Fair to fill it out. We're bribing them with little butterflies. If you all want a butterfly.
Thanks.
Yeah. So it is easier on your phone. I encourage you to encourage others to fill it out. It is easier if you're on your phone. Takes about 10 minutes, a little bit longer if you're using paper. But we are moving along on that.
Anyone? Questions, comments? Meeting adjourned.